You know, got birth, but he was always chanting the holy name of Krishna, that was his desire. And Haridasa was called as Nama Acharya Veshi Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and every day he was chanting. How many times, anyone can say how many times Haridasa was chanting every day? Two rounds?
Nine lakh.
Nine lakh, nine lakh is kausnah, nine lakh cows of Krishna, okay.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand times, yeah, that's brilliant, yeah, three hundred thousand times, it's nearly hundred. How many rounds it comes to, anyone has any idea approximately? One ninety rounds, yes, that's true, around one ninety or one ninety-two rounds. So that's really brilliant. So that's what Haridasa, so he's not an ordinary personality, is Brahmi himself, who has taken this, you know, wonderful form to assist, to give pleasure to Lord Chaitanya in his pastimes. Jai wonderful for all the kids who have done this beautiful drama. Okay, so Prabhu, who is next?
Thank you, Madhaji, next one is from Dwarka. From Dwarka, Himant Prabhu, Matraj Prabhu. Rajesh Kasa Prabhu. Anyone from you, Prabhu?
Ah, Agishna Prabhu, Dandat Pranam, yeah, I'll be sharing the drama on the screen for us.
The pastime of Lord Chaitanya's appearance is very special. First of all, the situation Navadweepa was very unusual. We know that India is the land of dharma, but we also find in Shrimad Bhagavatam that there are different kinds of dharma. There is sanarthana dharma or bhagavata dharma, the real eternal principles of religion. And there is a dharma or a religion. Many people perform different kinds of superficial things like hatha yoga, claiming it as religion, but they are just doing it for good health. It's originally meant to be a basis for spiritual advancement. So like this, there are different kinds of practices which are actually not the real dharma. Just before Chaitanya Mahaprabhu came, people were mad about these superficial religious activities. People would marry their daughters with big festivals and that was considered like a very big ceremony. Of course, marriage is an important ceremony, the highest principle of spiritual life. People were doing the marriage like a big festival just to show that this was the richest, nicest marriage in the town. Then if someone was defeated, if another person held a bigger wedding, then the first person had no more daughters, he would marry Shiva and Parvati Muthis.
You are defeating me, I will do something bigger than that in the turn. You are doing Lord Shiva and Parvati. Well, I will do something new that has never happened before. I will marry a male and female dog who can do the dog marriage.
If you do a dog marriage, I will get a male and female cat married.
What is all this? What does this have to do with religion or spiritual life?
People were just doing big puja's to get material benefit. Hardly anyone was worshipping Vishnu and no one was chanting the holy names. Before the appearance of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Advaita Gosai appeared. He was a combined avatar of Mahavishnu and Sadashiva.
It is too difficult to give people love for Godhead. Lord Vishnu could kill demons and give moksha. But to give love, to make people change, that is the most difficult thing. Only Krishna himself can do this, he must come out to give his own love. Hey Krishna, hey Krishna.
Advaita worshipped the Sala Grahamasila with Ganges water and turasi.
Om Shivaaya Namaha.
He fasted, he prayed and he loudly shouted.
Lord, please come down. If my name is Advaita, which means non-different, then let my name become true. You come down, I'm requesting you, please come. Go Langa, go Langa, go Langa.
At the same time, Shiva Stakura was also praying for Krishna to come to correct all these irreligious acts.
Lord, please come down to correct all these irreligious acts.
So the Lord agreed to come in the family of Jagannatha Mishra and Sachimatha. One day, Jagannatha Mishra had a dream. All of a sudden, a brilliant light came in his mind and reached to his heart. He dreamt that Krishna was in his heart and then from his heart, transferred over to Sachimatha's heart and then entered into a womb. This was an immaculate conception, a spiritual transfer without physical relation. It was a transcendental experience. In this way, the Lord entered from Jagannatha Mishra to Sachimatha. Sachimatha then woke up confused. She felt very different. And then Sachimatha found out that she was expecting a baby. Jagannatha Mishra noticed that Sachimatha had become so beautiful. She looked like the goddess of fortune. People were walking up to Jagannatha Mishra and said.
Here my dear Brahmana, take some money.
Because the goddess of fortune had come to his house, everything was becoming very auspicious.
My dear was, people are just coming and giving me money, what does this mean?
Maybe there is a great soul in my room, making everything auspicious. I have seen heavenly beings coming and praying to me.
Many devas were coming and praying to Lord Chaitanya.
Om Namu Bhagwate Vasudhivaya.
Jaya Jaya Shri Chaitanya Jaya Nityananda. Jaya Dhyadha Chandra Jaya Gauravatharinda. Jaya Jaya Shri Chaitanya Jaya Nityananda. Jaya Dhyadha Chandra Jaya Gauravatharinda.
My dear Lord Krishna, we understand that you are appearing in this age of Kali as Gauranga. You come in every yoga as an incarnation. You come and give Muthi liberation. But it is very rare for you to give up the love of Krishna. But in this incarnation, we understand that you are going to freely give out the love of Godhead.
We are your devotees from the heavenly planets and we came here to beg for your blessings. We don't want material blessings. We have enough material things. In the heavenly planets, we have so much sense gratification.
We only have two problems. One problem is that the demons sometimes come and attack us so that they can conquer heaven and enjoy. Another problem is that there is so much sense gratification. Apsaras, heads and devas, knights reverse, gardens, mystic powers. There is so much sense gratification that we forget to serve you. We forget your loving service. We are deprived of your love because of too much sense gratification.
Hello Gauranga, please show your mercy on us with the pride of your love.
Now we want love of Godhead, please help us. You are going to appear on this planet and the human beings are going to get all your mercy. Please don't deprive us of your mercy. We also want to have love for Krishna.
The baby has been in the womb for longer than nine months. It is thirteen months now, but the Sachi was a bit concerned and went to her father Neelambara Chakravarti, who is a great astrologer. He confirmed that Lord Chaitanya will appear on a full moon day.
Father, what's happening? I've been pregnant for thirteen months, I'm very concerned.
Everything is all right. Your son will be born on a full moon day.
On the holy day of Lord Chaitanya's appearance, it was a full moon Purnima day and also a lunar eclipse. According to the Vedic system, one becomes contaminated on the day of eclipse and so Hindus go to a sacred river at that time and chant the holy names of the Lord to counteract the contamination. So almost the whole city of Navadweepa, thousands of people all went to the Ganges and they were chanting.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama.
Some Muslims were watching and commented.
What, what are these Hindus doing? Why are they chanting Hari Bol Hari Bol?
Oh, why are they chanting Hare Krishna?
Although they did not have faith, they were also chanting. They were making fun of the Hindus, but somehow or other, they were also chanting.
They say this eclipse is inauspicious, but look how everyone is chanting the holy name. This is a very auspicious time, everyone is chanting Hari Bol Hari Bol.
All the Vaishnavas were very happy, they were thinking, why is this called an inauspicious day? This is the best day of the year. See, everyone is singing and dancing, chanting the holy name in the holy river Ganges.
Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama.
Whole land of India was filled with the vibration of holy name.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare.
The news spread that Sachimatha had given birth to a boy and he was very, very beautiful. He was golden in color. Even devas and devis were discussed as Brahmanas and Brahmanis came to see the Lord.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Gauranga, Gauranga, Gauranga.
Gauranga, 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 Gauranga.
Advaita Gosai felt blissful and he was dancing in ecstasy. Haridasa was chanting in bliss.
Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol.
Hari Bol, nice Prabhu, anyone sharing any, any message?
Um, Agishna Madhaji, Dandat Pranam.
Hari Bol, Prabhu.
Thank you for giving.
You are the narrator.
Yeah, um, thank you for giving us this opportunity to present the divine appearance of the Lord. And also, we involved all the, most as many children as possible, as well as teenagers to, to present this wonderful pastime of the Lord. Um, so here in this, the one of the messages that we realized is that how compassionate the Vaishnavas were there at that time because they could see so many religious activities in front of them. And they felt so much compassion for this fallen souls in Kaluga. So they were like Shiva Stakura and Advaita Acharya, they were praying intensely so the Lord can come down. And sometimes when we have the jewel next to us, we will not realize. But even you could see how the demigos from the heavenly planets, they were so desperate to come down to, to take the blessings and to take the association of the Lord. And this, by reading this wonderful pastime and presenting it, that's, that's what I was realizing, Madhaji. When people from heavenly planets are so desperate and what about us, you know, we should be really um, so much appreciative of being part of this movement. Um, and especially with the situation now and as, as devotees, we all can chant not only for us, for the entire world, just like how Advaita Acharya and Shiva Stakura did. We can follow their footsteps, thank you, Madhaji.
Thank you, Jai Hari Bol, wonderful. Yes, Gaurapurnima is coming near and we could see, um. So I just have a question because just to see that, how many devotees are in the last week's program? So last week we were discussing that Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's appearance. There are internal reasons and external reasons, right, for the Lord to appear. So could you please tell us the prayers of Advaita Acharya? Um, is one of the reasons that Mahaprabhu appeared is through the prayers of Advaita Acharya? And to propagate the holy name, you know, Hare Krishna mantra to deliver all the conditions, so it's very completely ennobled. You know, in the sense gratification as we saw in the drama. So what, what, was it an internal reason, was it an external reason? What was the reason that Advaita Acharya's prayers, Mahaprabhu comes to give the holy name? What kind of reason is that?
It's an external reason.
It's an external reason, are you sure?
Yes, yes, Madhaji.
Sure, okay, so what is the internal reason then? Yes, it is external reason, correct, I was just confusing you, that's correct. Many Maya Vadi philosophies was being propagated, okay, so all that is to the external reasons. What is the internal reason, can anyone say?
To experience the mood of Radharani.
Experience the mood of, I'm just looking for three things. Um, to see that who can say all the three things if possible. Mood of Radharani to experience the mood of a devotee, okay, that's one right answer. Uh, to S, to experience a bliss, what a devotee feels brilliant, that is second. Okay, two, what is the third one? That's the holy name, yeah, the holy name is correct, that's external reason, internal reason, three, three reasons. Yes, separation is correct, yes, Krishna's sweetness. So one is to experience in the position of Shrimati Radharani. Experience ecstasy in the position of Radharani, what Radharani feels. The devotion, what she feels in her position. So Krishna wants to be in her position and relish that, so that's one reason. Second reason is Krishna wants to know, what is that Radharani is relishing in me? What is that sweetness in me that she is relishing? So his own sweetness he wants to know. So, is, that is one of the reasons, internal reason, second reason. And the third one is, what is the bliss she is experiencing? One is in the position of Shrimati Radharani, uh, he wants to experience. Second, the bliss what she experiences and the sweetness in himself what she is experiencing. So these are three reasons. So brilliant, I think devotees are hearing the sessions. Okay, so shall we call out Gauranga three times before we go to the next drama? Gauranga. That's brilliant, so let's listen to the last drama. Uh, it, it, there is a special reason why this particular topic was given, which I will explain later. Okay, let's get into it.
Thank you, Madhaji, last drama from the Mathura, Vivek Prabhu and the team.
Bhushan Madhaji, are you ready?
Yes, Madhaji, Hare Krishna everybody. Hare Krishna everyone, wish you all a very happy Gaurapurnima V. Here as Mathradham devotees, we are presenting a drama on the festival of Madvindrapuri. Let's take you to Shantipuram where Advaita Acharya will be taking initiation from Madvindrapuri. We are at the bank of river Ganges where the great saint, Madvindrapuri did not like to walk on the public road because he might see another sanyasi and they gave him pain by calling him Narayana. Saying we are sanyasi, we sanyasis are Narayana, we are all God. These sanyasis were Maya Vatis, they all thought that they were one with Brahman. Also, if he met ordinary persons, they wanted blessings. They wanted blessings for nice health, good business, some kind of material blessing. Nobody was interested in spiritual life. They just wanted to touch the feet of a sanyasi to get his spiritual credits to use for the material punya, for the pious result. But the real purpose, of course, is to approach a sanyasi guru for spiritual knowledge, to get transcendental wisdom from him, to get his spiritual shelter or shiksha. Seeing all this, Madvindrapuri decided to walk by the side of river Ganges. He was thinking, I will get the association of river Ganges. Even if the place is dirty, it is better than getting disturbed by so many materialistic people. So then, he happened to walk to Advaita Acharya's ashram, which was by the side of river Ganges. He walked right into his ashram. There Advaita Acharya was seated doing puja's to his Shaligramshila with water, milk, bell, patra, flowers. He was wearing Vaishnavatilak. And he saw Madvindrapuri who was also wearing Vaishnavatilak. Immediately he caught up and paid his obesenses to Madvindrapuri. Who also offered his respects to Advaita Acharya. Shrimati Sita Thakurani, wife of Advaita Acharya, welcomed Madvindrapuri, offered him a seat, paid obesenses and offered some water. Madvindrapuri agreed to take some prashadam. Shrimati Sita Thakurani offered nice Krishna prashadam. Quite some time had passed. So Advaita Acharya asked him, please stay here tonight and give us some more association. It is very rare to get such association. So like this, he stayed sometime with Advaita Acharya and they were discussing about Krishna. In this way, time went very fast. Then he said, I have to go on in order to get sandalwood paste. Then he said, I have to go in order to get some sandalwood paste for the Kopala deity in Govardhana. Later this deity became known as Sri Naativi. They were discussing Harikatha discussions about Krishna, they found they both were Vaishnavas. They were discussing Krishna conscious in a very deep way, in a beautiful way. Advaita Acharya getting to know him could realize his greatness, so he asked him to give him initiation. Normally there is a waiting period of six months to one year to get to know the person. But this time he was a traveling sanyasi, he was not going to be there in six months. He wanted to get the mantra from a bona fide spiritual master. He knew that this was a bona fide person from a bona fide sampradaya. He was thinking, where will we get a devotee like Madvindrapuri who is personified love of Godhead? So he took initiation from Madvindrapuri. Now after few years of Madvindrapuri's disappearance, Advaita Acharya and Lord Chaitanya were celebrating this appearance day of Madvindrapuri at Shantipuram. Somewhere along his journey, Lord Chaitanya stopped by the ashram of Advaita Acharya in Shantipuram. It happened to be the day of Govinda Dwadashi, the Dwadashi before Gaurapurnima, which is when they have the festival of Madvindrapuri. Advaita Acharya was a disciple of Madvindrapuri, so he arranged this massive, massive feast and festival. Lord Chaitanya was treating him with respect because he took initiation from the disciple of Madvindrapuri Ishwarapuri. So Advaita Acharya was like his god uncle, so he offered respect. But Advaita knew that Lord Chaitanya is Krishna in a hidden incarnation, so he wanted to offer Lord Chaitanya respect. But Lord Chaitanya wouldn't allow that because he was playing the external role as a devotee. He was not meant to be known publicly that he was an incarnation. Advaita Acharya would celebrate the Vyaz Puja of Madvindrapuri each year. And Lord Chaitanya said that if anyone goes to Shantipuram at this tithi on this holiday and take prashadam, they will get pure love for Govinda, pure devotion for Krishna. Lord Chaitanya saw the elaborate arrangements of Advaita Gosai for worshipping Madvindrapuri and he saw all the different devotees that were engaged in the service. Each one said, I want to do some seva, some service. Nityanandi volunteer, Nityananda volunteered to bathe the lotus feet of all visiting Vaishnavas. That was the service he wanted to do. Lord Chaitanya was saying that no human being could make such a massive arrangement like Advaita Acharya had made for Madvindrapuri. He said, this is not humanly possible. Advaita Acharya must be an incarnation of Shiva or someone. Otherwise, how is it possible that he made such an elaborate arrangement for prashadam distribution? He was praising Advaita Gosai. Of course, Advaita Goswami is an avatar of Mahavishnu and he is also the combined form of Sadashiva. The form of Lord Shiva before entering into the material world. Ladies were making flower garlands and someone was giving a lecture on Shrimad Bhagavatam. Some devotees were doing keertan and some were engaged in cooking. Shrimati Sita Thakurani and Madrasachi led the Mahaprashadam cooks and then the bulk quantities cooks, cooked for the massive number of devotees. The ingredients they had gathered for the feast were kept in temporary sheds and the quantity was calculated by sheds, this many sheds of this and that many sheds of that. As Lord Chaitanya went around, he saw some devotees were singing, other devotees were making garlands. So everyone was engaged. Then they asked Lord Chaitanya to please come and take prashadam. He sat down, took prashadam and said, whoever takes prashadam in this place on this tithi gets pure devotion for Govinda, pure love for Govinda. Lord Chaitanya said, where else you can get love for Godhead, simply by eating. No fasting, no difficult hostilities, just eating. You just have to come here on this tithi and eat. Shri Shri Shantipur Mahasakhi Jai.
Hari Bol. Hari Hari Bol, wonderful. So anyone speaking on that?
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna everyone. Welcome to Shantipur.
Hari Bol.
Yes, Madhaji, so simple and very key wording takeaway, I would just say in two words like the Mahavadhanaya form of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Where can we get this easy mercy? Just fisting, chanting and dancing. Shri Gauranga Mahaprabhu Ki. Just hitting back this Godway. Ki. Ja.
Hari Bol. Wonderful, Hari Hari Bol, very nice. Wonderfully done. Hari Bol, we felt the fest, feel of the festival. Could see that Vivek Prabhu is really eating some nice prashadam.
Actually, we, we was thinking to make bulk khitri every devotee's house, but Ekadasi fall on the table.
Yeah.
Shantipur khitri prashadam.
Yes, yes, yes. Because today the Ekadasi tithi also came, that's the reason, but otherwise, perfect.